Hello, I don't think this is, is this working?
Mm-hmm.
All right, sorry, we are starting a little late tonight. Welcome to the municipal council regular meeting, it's January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five at five thirty-five P. M. On the elected officials here today are councillor Becky Bogdan, councillor Craig Christensen, myself, Catrice McKay, councillor Rachel Whipple, councillor Gary Garrett, councillor George Handley, and the mayor Michelle Kafusi. Today's opening prayer will be provided by Zachary, Zachary H. And after that, the pledge of allegiance will be done by George Handley. Zachary, you can just come up to the front. I can stand. I got nervous on the last name, Zachary, I'm sorry.
It's all right, I can't say it either, it's Holtzaffel.
Yes.
Let us pray. God, our heavenly father, we are indeed grateful this evening to be gathered together as a community. And we are grateful for the freedoms we enjoy to participate in our local government and we are grateful for the peace and prosperity that we enjoy here in Provo, Utah. Father, we ask that thy spirit may accompany us this night, that we may make progress to continue to make Provo a city for all its citizens. That peace may reign and that the voice of the people may be heard. And for these things, father, we thank thee and ask in the name of Christ, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Zach.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first of all, we have a Provo City Employee of the Month for January twenty-two-five. And the council office is actually going to do it today, it'll be myself and Justin at the podium. All right, the council office has not done an employee of the month before. And honestly, we're, we're very close to all of our staff and they would all, we'd all have a ton of reasons to nominate each one of them for this, but um, we're gonna make a point of highlighting one of them once a year, so I guess employee of the year. Technically, I don't know. But um, we have, we started a new program last year that went into effect, is it last year? Time flies, almost two years now, but our neighborhood program, Rachel Breen. And a lot, a lot of people here today know Rachel Breen because we have a lot of neighborhood people here today who are in the neighborhood district program. It feels weird facing this way. Okay, so we love it that so many of them are here today on the same day that she's getting recognition. And it's hard starting a new program and you want to be successful and you want people to feel informed and you want to go well. And Rachel has done an amazing job. And she makes everyone feel loved and she makes everyone feel heard and she, she's responsive and she's caring. And she even deals with all the technical stuff she has to deal with and all those meetings for the neighborhood program and we are just so grateful, grateful for taking something that was black and white on paper and making it more alive and more personal, Justin?
No, I, I will echo all the comments from Chair McKay and I won't say much because honestly, I will get emotional. I am so happy to be associated with the folks that either serve on the council or who work in the council office. And Rachel is just such an exemplary example of that, she loves the citizens of Provo, she cares for them, she wants to help you bring your voice in front of elected officials, she wants you to be informed and, and more than anything, she just cares so much. And I love, I love that. Rachel is just an awesome person to work with and I am so proud just to be able to know her, so Rachel, thank you so much.
Can you do a picture?
Waiting for the projector. All right, one.
All right, next we are going to recognize the neighborhood district executive board members, thank you and a welcome. We have some ones going out of the program and some new ones coming in and this is presented by Rachel Breen, our neighborhood program coordinator.
Well, I feel like I can say the exact same thing for my neighborhood representatives, these are volunteers who go above and beyond because they love their neighborhoods so much and they love Provo. And so I just wanted to give a big thank you to those that have served. We started this new program two years ago. And so they, we had to do a staggered, some did, started with two-year terms, some with a four-year term. So these are the ones that had their two-year term that are going out. But I just wanted to, and if they could stand when I say their names and if we can give them a round of applause at the end. But from District One, we had Stan Jensen and Marion Monahan, who has been serving in the neighborhood program since two thousand three continuously. I love that. We have Kent Johnson and Laura Middleton, that's been serving since two thousand eighteen. And then in District Two, we have Michael Barber, Ryan Nelson, Anne Woodbury, who's been serving since two thousand nineteen. Hannah Peterson's been serving since two thousand sixteen. Christina Davis and then in District Three, Arian Adams from two thousand sixteen, Tiffany Limits. Brian Taylor from two thousand four, Marion beat him out by one year for being the longest running one. Sean Hilton, District Four, Richard Yowsey from, he started in two thousand twenty. Mindy Jefferson, who started in two thousand sixteen and I promised her husband I wouldn't have her continue. He said he needed his wife at home after all these years. Erin Scablin started in two thousand fifteen, Leah Duncan, and then in District Five, we had Leo Lines from two thousand eleven, so if we can give them all a big round of applause. They have been amazing and even though they're not on the boards anymore, they're still participating, there's, they're still giving me ideas, they're still doing great. And then we want to do a welcome to our brand new neighborhood district leaders, this is super exciting, so again, if they can stand when I call your name and then we'll do a round of applause as a welcome, they will be serving four-year terms. So in District One, we have Jennifer Griffin, Jeff Olson, Kristen Winward, Scott Murray, Rhoda Galfin, Zach Lee Holtzaffel, Michael Sellers. And in District Two, we have James Hall, Laura Marr, Laura Harper, Angie Carter, Tana Hoover, and Kevin Cook. And then District Three, we have John White, Emily Paxton, Shane Tongish, and Derek Nay. District Four, we have Stephen Burton, Emily, Emily, Melanie Epling, Chris, Kristen Kramer, and David Alderks. And then in Neighborhood District Five, we have Bronson Ruiz, Christina, oh, I've got the wrong name in there, should be Christina Bachelor. Rob Slater, Thomas Ream, Caitlin Field Garcia, Thomas Spencer, Crystal Vomisil, and Jay Shepard. So you're going to see a lot of them, council, so as you know, we have our neighborhood meetings, this is where they meet with developers, Provo School District, they talked about the concerns of their neighborhood, they meet with city staff and the mayor. They also do social events and causes, they tell, they have parties to tell their residents about event, about the services the city has. They do get out the vote events, they help open parks, they're really an asset to the community. They do lots of service projects, cleaning up. I, I hope you love as much as I do the, the fixing up, the landscaping by Fresh Market was done by our communities, helping fire safety in our areas. And also doing those matching grants, using that money that we get from the council to do projects that mean a lot to their individual communities, whether that's completing sidewalks, again, that landscaping project, getting picnic tables, even something as simple as a volleyball court where they've just had sand for years and years and years, just to have that volleyball net. It's really such a great program that, that you have for them and that they have their voice that they can give to you and we really appreciate that the council goes to their meetings to hear what the residents have to say, we really appreciate all the time. And that the mayor takes time out of her busy schedule every year to do our big meeting and a plug that if you have questions for the mayor, make sure to email them to me so we can get them to the city staff so they can answer them at, at that meeting. But, so right now, we want to do a group photo with the, the board members that are outgoing and then the board members that are incoming. So if we could do a group photo up here, oh, I have a little, I had a little slide we could do, so I didn't have to waste your time doing the thing. So here we go. No, I'm sorry. I should have said, where are we at? But anyway, if we can have the new board members and the outgoing board members, just kind of all up here with the council and the mayor. Do you, yeah, let's have the council stay there and stand up. Oh, okay, okay, no problem. The continuing, if the continuing board members want to be in the photo too, let's get them all in here. Yes.
And you didn't have any list.
Yeah, because you're continuing.
Okay, so there are other continues, maybe I should be up here.
I'm just saying, if you're a neighborhood district board member and you want to come up, we'd love to have you in the photo.
Okay.
Get it in there. I'll sneak in here right. All right, one, two, three. All right, good.
Hey, and then we are going to go over to the community room, we're gonna have a little reception for the board members just across the hall.
Next, we're gonna have a presentation regarding the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four popular annual financial report, this is presented by Andrea Wright, our budget analyst. For the record, we'd also like to recognize that Travis Hoben joined us.
So you guys can see it, the public cannot. But it is available online if they want to go ahead and follow along with us.
Is it on the, it's on those, right?
They can see it, I just can't. What is the popular annual financial report, or as we in finance like to call it, is the PAFR. The PAFR summarizes the financial activities of the city and is drawn from a more detailed report called the ACFR, which is the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. The PAFR provides a condensed, more appealing, easier to understand format for the residents. Provo has received the Governmental Financial Officer Association Award for twelve years in a row now. Which, I mean, just to indicate how important it is to us to provide an understandable financial report to the residents. Um, I'll just highlight which, how do I highlight the pages? Are you gonna be my next pager? Perfect. Oh, and I know what it is, I'm good. Oh, I can make it move. Okay, so I can make it move with. Hey, sweet, awesome, I'll just highlight a couple of pages, for example, if you'll go to page eight, please. And you get a breakdown on what the revenue funds, the general, what revenues fund the general fund. It also has a lovely pie chart that shows it by percentage, which is easier for it to break down for you, you can see that the FY twenty-four, our largest source of revenue for the general fund was the sales tax of twenty-eight percent. Then if you go to the next page, on page eight, it breaks down the different expenditures for the general fund by percentage. And you can see here that the police department, which is the largest one, is thirty percent, which is more than what the sales tax we receive. Another beneficial page is page twelve. It provides a property tax summary for, what's specific for a Provo residence, sorry, I feel like I'm breathing in the mic really bad. Um, then it breaks down kind of by number and also percentage on how it's broken out to the different entities. Um, the PAFR is a great tool to utilize, especially if you don't understand all the legal mumbo jumbo. So is there any questions about the PAFR?
Any questions? I don't think so, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, next, I'm sorry, this mic is really freaking out today. Next, a presentation recognizing outgoing council leadership for two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, and this is presented by Justin Harrison.
All right. Thank you, council, well, I'm disappointed everyone left because this is, this is a great item, I, to give a little background, for the folks, I know there's a large audience watching online and for those in, in the council chambers, each year the council selects a chair and a vice chair. And for the last two years, it's consisted of the same individuals, which, at least in my short time here in Provo, has been most of what I've known, but, but understanding the history, it's been, it's been quite an oddity for that to happen. And Chair Catrice McKay and Vice Chair Rachel Whipple just spend so much time, honestly, an inordinate amount of time, working on council things in addition to, you know, trying to balance home life, professional life, constituent calls, just all these different things. And to, to give you a little idea of, of something, I mean, even this item, we tried to, we tried to not let it, let it be as known, each Thursday, we meet as council staff with council leadership and go over upcoming agendas and, and tried to keep it secret. But really just wanted to take a few minutes and tell you thank you so much for all the work that you do. These two wonderful elected officials, I know I, I said it already, but I would say they've got to spend close to thirty or forty hours a week on city-related things. All while being paid the, the lu- luxurious salaries of part-time city council members. I think if you divided it out, they're, they're making pennies on the dollar, so it truly is a public service. And just wanted to say, thank you so much from, from council staff, from the city, thank you for the work you do, thank you for the investment you made in your community, thank you to your families for allowing you to serve and to let us borrow you for these last two years, it really has been a pleasure to work with you. And we have a little memento for you, so you've got to come down too, we've got to take a picture. And don't worry, they're not as bejazzled as they could have been, but they're pretty, pretty awesome, so. Thank you. Crystal gavel. All right, we need a picture, I think we need a picture.
Let's do it, let's do it, since there's. Yeah, crystal gavels involved.
All right, a couple items, number one, we have continued. All right, a couple items. Number one, we have continued our last item number, no, it's not the last item. We continued item number eight, which was, um, a discussion regarding rooftop solar. So I just wanted to make that clear to people before we started. If you want to make a comment in the two-minute public comment, you're more than welcome to do that about that item, but it is continued. We continued it for like a couple months. Um, public comment, as indicated on the screen, a required public hearing will be held for certain agenda items prior to council action. After each such item is presented, time to comment will be provided for all those who wish to speak. For items that do not require a public hearing, public comment will still be taken following presentation of the item, but will be limited to 10 minutes. At this time, up to 15 minutes have been set aside for an open public comment period, which is intended to allow comment on matters that do not appear on the agenda, but are limited to topics regarding municipal business or within municipal council purview. Persons who speak during this time to an item that is on the agenda will not normally be afforded a second opportunity to speak during the comment period specific to that item. During any public comment period, each speaker will generally be limited to two minutes. Due to no senior requirements, no formal action will be taken in this meeting on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Those with comments are invited to approach the podium. Those participating on Zoom will need to use the raise hand feature to indicate they wish to comment. The chair may choose to alternate between in-person and online commenters. Please begin your comments by stating your name and the city of your residence. You will have two minutes to speak. Is there anyone here for public comment? All right.
Do you have one person online that their hand raised? I asked a while ago if you're going to make a public comment, you haven't responded.
If you are online and want to make a public comment, now is your time. All right. Well, we'll go on to our first, I'm a Business, an election of the municipal council chair and vice chair. And this will be presented by Justin Harrison.
All right, Council, I promise this the last time you'll see me tonight. But, um, as I mentioned in the last item, so each year the council, um, per city code is required to elect a chair and vice chair. Uh, the only caveat I will give is that, um, a chair cannot serve more than two consecutive terms. So unless there are any questions, the time is now, a motion can be made, um, but there is no debate on the item. And you are free to, to vote as quickly or take as much time as you would like.
Counselor Christensen.
Sir, can I make a motion?
Absolutely.
I make a motion, uh, to elect Gary Garrett as the, uh, council chair.
I will second that motion. All right, any discussion? We can't take discussion, all right? Taking a vote on the motion. Counselor Bogdan.
Yes.
Counselor Christensen.
Yes.
Counselor Garrett.
Yes.
Counselor Handley.
Yes.
Counselor Hoben.
Enthusiastically, yes.
Counselor McKay, yes. Counselor Whipple.
Yes.
So that passes seven oh.
I would like to make a motion, Chair McKay.
Go ahead.
Yes, uh, I would like to nominate Rachel Whipple as vice chair for the council.
Second that.
Right, we will, we will take a vote on the motion. Counselor Christensen.
Yes.
Counselor Garrett.
Yes.
Counselor Handley.
Yes.
Counselor Hoben.
Emphatically, yes.
Counselor McKay, yes. Counselor Whipple.
Yes, but I'm, can't match Travis's level of emphasis. It's great.
Counselor Bogdan.
Yes.
Now pass seven oh.
Gary.
Yes. So with that, you can switch.
We're just going to stay here where the mic is proving to be more effective. So this is effective immediately, then?
Congratulations.
I do want to, um, clarify, earlier, uh, we misspoke. It's actually item nine that's being continued. The solar, um, rooftop solar rates discussion that will be continued to a later date. Item nine. On, on the agenda that's published, it's item nine. On our paper, it's item eight.
Oh, okay.
Next on the agenda, we'll hear an ordinance regarding text amendments to section 15.03.020 to update 2024 standards to 2025 standards. This will be presented by David Day, the Assistant City Engineer.
Thank you. Each year, we, uh, update our Provo city standards so that we're up to date and keep moving and, and making things better. We take input from contractors, engineers, the general public, and we implement those into our changes each year. So I'm just going to go over a few of those. And if you have questions along the way, then stop me. So he- here's the actual code change to section 150320. And so those are, those are the, the text changes to our ordinance. Just a kind of a side note, we, these are all of the, like, the front covers of rather large books that we're adopting as referenced in the ordinance. Uh, the only two that we change are the, the upper left corner, the Provo city standards and, and specifications. Kind of an exciting thing for me, uh, is that the APWA standards that we've been using are, are 2017 standards. They will be updated this year to 2025. Uh, they are already available. And, uh, that's exciting. The other exciting, exciting thing is that contractors will no longer have to purchase those. Those are available online for free. Uh, that was an effort we pushed forward in APWA to try to get more widespread use and adoption of those. So the rest of these, there's, there's probably what, five, 6,000 pages worth of information that are contained right here. So a picture is worth a lot of words, right? So, uh, four pages of our standard drawings were edited. Three pages were completely added brand new. And three pages of our development, uh, design standards were edited. So here, here's just real quick, that's what that looks like. These are the changes we made. Um, I'm just going to go through these real quick unless you want me to stop and expound on them. This, however, is the most exciting one. The sewer lateral with the foam to, uh, cap it at the main. So that, that one on the right, there is a pretty substantial addition to our spec. Uh, the rest of them, look at them. If you have any questions about that, then ask me. Tried to make that exciting, right? Specs are exciting.
It, it was. Thank you, Mr. Day. Any, uh, questions for David?
I just want to say he had me at 5,000 pages. Yeah, yeah, let's, you didn't have to read it, you could just see him.
Thank you, David. So this item, this implied motion, is available for public comment if there's anyone here who wishes to speak to this. Seeing none, we'll move to council discussion if there is any. And if not, we'll call for a vote. Counselor Handley.
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan.
Yes.
Counselor Christensen.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Hoben.
Yes.
Counsel, Counsel Whipple.
Yes.
Counselor McKay.
Yes.
And Counsel Garrett, yes. So that motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have an ordinance regarding the increase of water impact fees. This will be presented by Kelsey Zarbach, who is one of our budget officers.
Good evening. Um, John Borget and the Public Works team had been presenting on this in work meeting. What this is related to is, um, the water impact fee proposal for increases. Um, as you're well aware, there's been a, a new water master plan that, um, the studies worked with Bowen and Collins on. And Andy Harris is on Zoom, available for comment if you have any questions about that. And then, um, after the water impact, uh, after the water master plan was done, Zion's Public Finance conducted a water impact fee facilities plan. And Susie Becker with Zion's is on Zoom as well, if you have questions for her. Um, basically, the results of those studies and those plans is a recommendation to increase water impact fees. Um, although you'd be voting on these increases tonight, they wouldn't go into effect until July 1st. And I also know Public Works is here if you have any questions related to, um, the nuances of all of this. Any questions for me?
Any questions for Kelsey? Or any of those professionals who are here to answer any questions? Thank you, Kelsey.
Thank you.
This item is also available for public comment if anyone would like to speak to this proposed increase for water impact fees. Yes.
My name's Eileen Miller. I'm Government Affairs with the Utah Valley Home Builders Association. Um, I wanted to thank Provo City, especially John, for including us early on in the process. Invited us to the staff meetings and also, uh, the planning sessions. I will just again reiterate, we are trying to do affordable housing. And, um, as I explained in your work meeting, your planning meeting, that Provo, the land that's left here to be developed is the most difficult land to build on because of water tables and, and also, um, the distance from your core infrastructure. So consequently, you're going to have a lot higher cost on those properties when you sell the, the completed product, whether it's multiple family dwellings or condos or twin homes or single-family dwellings. So it's, um, I know it's a, a result of the economic downturns that we've been going through recently. Uh, the supply chain issues that we, we encounter. But I just wanted to let you know that, um, we appreciate being included in your process. Thank you very, very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, Eileen. Sir, did you have a comment also regarding the water impact fees?
I'm Sam Wallman. I live down a major neighborhood of, you just talked about water impact fees being increased. How much and what would that amount to? There were so few details in this. Is it something that is doubling, tripling, or is it tied to the use of the property? We have numerous properties in our neighborhood that have been transformed. And we have 600 more units being built on the corner of Third South and University. We're going to start over and try to make sure that the pipes are big enough and paid for by the developer or the rest of the city because, oh, this is a economic boom and we're going to get so happy and everything is going to be perfect except for the taxpayers. Anyway, I'm just wondering what that impact fee, uh, increase and what it includes, is it just new ground? I just sold a house in Spring City and it water impact fee for a place that was little tiny place. Uh, it was 10,000 bucks for water and 10,000 bucks for sewer. And this is a, this is a subject in my family because my daughter's in charge of that kind of stuff up at the U now. She was at Spott Lake City. And it was a big deal. Anyway, I'm just wondering if there's any more details we can get at this meeting or is everything just, oh, well, that's mysterious.
No, that's fine, Sam.
15th, what, how many thousand pages did you guys save? Did you just pass on that other one? Nobody knows what it says. But I'm just wondering what the impact will be and will it be an impact on current property that is under development? And how much will it cost the people on Third South and, and University?
Thank you.
600 more. And we're talking about, our neighborhood has over 2,000 new apartments in the last little bit or plan for.
Thank you, Sam. Let's invite Kelsey to respond to that.
Really curious because my tax caller is going to be affected.
So the, the rates are set in the impact fee facilities plan, which should be with the material included in the council packet. So there's a schedule that shows what the rates would be for each year. Um, residents aren't the ones paying the impact fees. It's developers who would be paying it. And, um, again, it would begin July 1st to hopefully allow developers for current projects to finish up their projects and get the impact fees as they're currently in city code. They can pay them at that point. Um, so yeah, again, developers are paying it. It's the, the fees can only go toward new growth and, um, wouldn't be paying for current infrastructure. Does that answer?
Yes, it does. Thank you, Kelsey. So it does, uh, uh, give them time to plan, the developers.
I believe so. I, I'm not sure about every specific project, but I know that the intent was to.
By having an effective date of July 1st.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Kelsey. Any council discussion on this topic? Any more public comment first? Thank you, Rachel. Now, uh, back to the council for discussion. Catrice.
I do love that they invited you, Eileen, in that talk. I know that we've been working on that and I think that's awesome. So that makes you really happy. You're a stakeholder. You represent stakeholders, so I'm glad you're included. Um, it's been a goal of ours with impact fees, other service fees, um, to make sure they aren't being subsidized by citizens, but that, that a developer's paying for development fees. That if someone's getting a passport, they're paying the full price of that passport. If someone is, um, getting a dog license, I guess, that's something people do. They're paying the right fee for that. We just want to make sure that things are paying their cost. And, um, so that's something we've been going through the city and working on. So, um, I think this is good for the citizens of Provo. And we know that, just like we can't control the prices, there's things that developers can't control the prices on either with supplies and concrete and impact fees.
Thank you. Catrice, any additional council comment? Rachel.
Yeah, um, because this has an effective date of July 1st, the developers who are already able to get their applications in before them will be paying under the old fee schedule. So it's not going to affect ones that are already in the works, that are already at that point. They will be set at the old one. For what the change in cost looks like, um, it's changing the structure a little bit. So before the impact fee for a single-family residential unit was $4,042. And this is changing it to recognize the different water costs going to a small lot and to a standard lot. So for a small lot, it will go up to $4,916. And for a standard lot, it's $7,579. So it's, it's significantly more. But this goes, well, this goes to the actual cost that it takes to provide that much water to that much acreage. The other thing that this does is by encouraging the small lot development, it's, it's a little push that we can do to encourage more small lots, which would be more affordable housing options. So, and the other thing to note about this is that it's a schedule that we are adopting. So this will not be a fee that is fixed at this rate for the next 10 years. Each year, it's a slightly different amount, just like we've been paying different amounts for our sewer for the last, what, six, eight years, something like that? So there's, there's a table and I can share it with you afterwards, Ray. But all of this information has been presented to council. We spent quite a bit of time going back and forth about it. And it is in our packets so that you can go and pull it and look at it and, and read through the reports yourself. And none of this is as long as the MUTCD, so it's, it's doable. But it also might be good bedtime, self horrific type of, of reading.
Thank you, Rachel. Any additional comment? If not, we'll call for a vote on this implied motion. Councilmember Hoben? Councilmember Hoban?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Whipple?
Yes.
Councilmember Bogdan?
Yes.
Councilmember Christiansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Garrett, yes. Councilmember Handley?
Yes.
That motion passes seven zero. Next, we have an implied motion on an ordinance regarding a text amendment for the prohibition of sham property transactions. This will be presented by one of our planners, Jessica Donnicky.
Thank you, Councilor Garrett. So this ordinance text amendment to change the sham property transaction is to close a loophole where when people are establishing accessory dwelling units in the properties owned by a trust or an LLC, where they can get around that owner occupancy requirement. The purpose of this ordinance text amendment is just to make the understanding clear both for those applying and for the city as we enforce this section of code, what our expectation is when a property is owned by an LLC or a trust. So the proposed language just lays out that if the property is owned by an LLC or a trust and the membership of the LLC changes or the trustors change within the first year of establishing a rental or obtaining a rental dwelling license, or there's a consistent pattern of change throughout the rental period, that is considered a sham transaction and can be enforced. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Jessica. Any questions? All right, great. We'll open this also for public comment at this time. Are there any who would like to speak to this issue? If not, we'll move to council discussion. Any discussion, clarification? All right, great. Then we'll move to a vote. Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Whipple?
Yes.
Councilmember Bogdan?
Yes.
Councilmember Christiansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Garrett, yes. Councilmember Handley?
Yes.
And Councilmember Hoban?
Yes.
That motion passes seven to zero. All right. Next, we have an ordinance approving the petition to annex approximately 15.6 acres of land located at approximately 1,000 North Lakeview Parkway. That's in the Lakeview North neighborhood. This will also be presented by Jessica Donnicky.
Thank you. Yes, we have an ordinance to approve a petition to annex this area that you see on the slide before you. It contains three parcels. One is owned by the Provo School District and currently has some of the high school parking on, on it. And then the other two parcels are owned by Provo City. And it also includes a section of Bulldog Lane. And this section of land is in our annexation map area from the general plan. It's in section four. And the general plan future land use map shows that its potential future, future use would be residential. So if the property is annexed into the city before any development could happen on this property, the next steps would be to be rezoned and to get a concept plan approved and then to go through the project plan approval process. There would be opportunity for public comment on all of these plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Any questions for Jessica on this issue? Thank you. Again, we'll open this for public comment if any would like to speak to this issue.
Hi, Unexpected. Sharon Emmett, Northeast Area. I was in Planning Commission when they were discussing this and I'm surprised the neighbor's not here to speak to it. She commented about her concern about, and I don't know if you could pull up the map again. But I know, and, and I rise to speak simply because in our area, we landlocked in Timview, which grew beyond expectation, I believe. And then was, and it, and still is really on too small a parcel for the size of the school that it is. So I hope that as this, and I comprehend it still needs to go through the process, any development would still have, but I wanted to get it on your radar that we shouldn't lock this into by putting homes on it quickly. We should probably approach the school board and ask them if they'd be willing to purchase part of it because future possibilities for Provo High School seminary or track or whatever other uses the school might be able to make use of it immediately adjacent.
Thank you, Sharon. Any other public comment? If not, we'll close public comment and then, and bringing the item back to the council for discussion. Councilmember Bogdan?
Sharon, I'm gonna address all your concerns. We have been getting emails about this parcel with some of those same concerns for months. So back in August, I did approach the school board, including the school board president and the vice president and school board members and the superintendent. The school is big enough for growth. They have no desire nor need to purchase the parcel to the south. Parking lot, parking problems have always also come up by this group of people. The school board and superintendent seem to think the parking is underutilized at all times. People from events tend to park in the neighborhoods and on the streets because they don't want to walk. So therefore, the parking lot still is underutilized, but the streets are full of parking. Now, when they talk about Lakeview Elementary, which is kind of, you know, like your Edmont Elementary, I've heard concerns that the children walking to school, they have safety concerns with that. But the superintendent has not heard any of those concerns. They have not been brought, I guess, to the community council. And then I spoke this morning with Sergeant Bascom, who's over the SROs and the crossing guards. He says he has not heard or seen of any concerns in that area. And Vern Keisler, our traffic engineer, he said the only thing that he has heard is one of the residents wanted, he, they, they converted both of the pedestrian crossings into school safe crossings. And that's been within the last year or so. And one of the residents wanted the beacons to flash brighter. And the traffic engineer and our, in their studies have found that they don't need to flash any brighter, that things are well there. As far as growth for the elementary school, the the school district does own a parcel in Broadview Shores, which is immediately north of that. And so if anything needed to happen that way, they have additional space there, which is very close to both the high school and the elementary school. However, they are in the process of doing a boundary study and they will receive the results the first meeting of February, which I think is February 11th. So as far, and I did talk to another school board member this morning and she reiterated everything that I spoke with the superintendent and and the school board about back in August. So with as much as, as I do feel, feel for everyone around, the school board and the superintendent, they just do not see the issues the same as some of the other concerns that have been brought forward. And so I, I do appreciate the comments and we do take them seriously. This is my area and I, I really want to make sure that we get the best possible information before we make a decision. But I'm just not seeing, I'm just not seeing that from our school board and for, they, they're just going in a different direction. I should also say that I was told this morning that their numbers are staying the same. They're stagnant. They're just seeing a decrease in elementary school kids and an increase in secondary kids. But I was told with the rebuild of Timview and with the amount of space they left at Provo High, there's plenty of room to accommodate those extra students now and in the future.
Thank you, Becky. Any additional public, any additional council discussion on this item? If not, we'll move to a vote then. Councilmember Whipple?
Yes.
Councilmember Bogdan?
Yes.
Councilmember Christiansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Garrett, yes. Councilmember Handley?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoban?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes seven zero. Next, we have an implied motion on an ordinance amending Provo City Code in order to clarify and update standards for flag lots. This will be presented to us by one, another of our planners, Dustin Wright.
All right. Thank you, council. This evening, we'd like to present to you the amendment for the flag lot ordinance in our code. The reason we're doing this is to help make some improvements and some clarifications within that to be able to better utilize this tool in land use development. So flag lots play a, a good important role with helping especially with infill developments. So we have seen a few improvements that we'd like to make to help improve those. Essentially, these would be on the flagpole portion of these lots to decrease the, the width from what currently is there. This will help make more properties able to, to utilize this type of development and help increase our housing stock here in Provo. Also reducing the width of these helps improve safety with our pedestrian and vehicle crossings and conflicts there to help make those less frequent and also shorter distances. And so we've talked a little bit about some of that with you earlier today. Also, we've met with our Public Works Department and our Fire Department Fire Marshal to get their input as well, make sure that we're providing proper widths to be able to get utilities back to these lots and also fire, fire access that will be needed as well. So those are also included in this as well. So the Planning Commission has reviewed this and also forwarded a positive recommendation. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for Dustin from the council? Thank you, Dustin. We'll now open this comment, rather this item for public comment. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this issue? If not, we'll bring the item back to the council for discussion. Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. Councilmember Bogdan?
Yes.
Councilmember Christiansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Garrett, yes. Councilmember Handley?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoban?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
And Councilmember, Member Whipple?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. That motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have an implied motion on an ordinance regarding a zone map amendment from the R18 and RA zones to the A one zone in order to develop a 25 acre flex industrial campus located approximately at 3450 West Center Street in the Fort Utah neighborhood. This will be presented by our planning supervisor, Aaron Hardmore.
Thank you, Chair. And just to be clear, that's the airport industrial, the AI zone. So we've got the property up here on the screen. There's been a history on this property and the property to the east of different plans coming in front of you. About a year or so ago, we updated the general plan to what you see on the right there to make that airport related for future use instead of residential. And this zone, the airport industrial is trying to fulfill that purpose. The, the concept plan that came along with this zone change request is this. It's a flex industrial office warehouse space, multiple buildings. Key points from this proposal that are actually tied into a development agreement proffered by the applicant with the rezon request are the open space amenities along the river and along the, the boundaries of the property. You can see a brown line that wraps both this property and the properties to the east. And then along the river, there's nodes of, of park use and, and viewing areas and benches and things to, to kind of make sure we maintain that important corridor for our, our public. Other than that, I can tell you that the, the Planning Commission recommended approval. So long as the applicant guarantees river access and amenities as shown in the plan. And staff is also recommending approval on this action.
Great. Thank you, Aaron. Any questions for Aaron? Councilmember Bogdan?
Aaron, I'm gonna pick on you for a little bit. It's not that I have a question. I just want to make things more clear for the people who are here or listening. Okay, so why was this changed from residential to industrial?
So that was, that was your guys' action about a year, two years ago. So the, there's a lot of discussions surrounding that. I think there was a couple dissenting votes. But in the end, it made more sense to have this be airport related as it was kind of lumped in with the barriers of Provo River and Lakeview Parkway. It was lumped in with more of the industrial spaces surrounding the airport and the future growth of the airport. It made more sense to, to designate that land use rather than residential.
And if I remember right, there was a citizen group committee that consisted of their neighborhood chair and several residents that lived nearby. And they did a study from the airport and they found that the airport planes actually go over this area and they will for some time. So it didn't really make that much sense to them to keep it as residential because of all the noise and the obstruction from the air traffic above it. It would make more sense, especially with the clean clear cut of the Lakeview Parkway to, to transition it into airport industrial. Am I remembering that correctly?
Yeah, that was another, that was another aspect of it, correct?
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Bogdan. Any other questions for Aaron? Yes, Councilmember Christiansen?
First of all, I AI, I wasn't thinking airport industrial.
Yeah, it's gonna be a confusing acronym.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
I didn't know we had different kinds of zoning. I just also wanted to point out, and you mentioned it, but just to make sure, we had a bit of discussion in our work meeting about this goes, this is actually bordered by the Provo River. Making sure there's a, a, a very clear, you know, easement and, you know, access to the river. We also talked about the building heights. Did you, were you able to find out the building heights here?
Yeah. So in this zone, it's maximum height of 55 feet or three stories.
Okay. And so this, this just borders right on the Provo River Delta, just north of this river is the Provo River Delta begins. And just want to make sure that as you work with the developer, that's front and center in terms of making sure we preserve those easements and right away to the river.
Yeah, I think that's been clear through all this and appreciate that.
Councilmember Hoban?
I was one of the ones who wanted to keep it residential. And one thing they mentioned was that they were going to be able to have more space around the river. Basically, what they were saying is, oh, if this is residential, you're gonna have a, you know, an eight foot fence or whatever right there. It's gonna, you know, be right along the river and so with this concept plan, do we have enough details there? Just that, that was part of kind of the deal was like, oh, we're gonna make this really nice, gonna be a really nice amenity following the river. Gonna be spaced between the river and the buildings, et cetera.
Yeah. So that's, that's been illustrated in this concept plan and will be followed through with the project plans and plating. And that's secured by the development agreement. This concept will be there and then an open fence is also part of that development agreement.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that hadn't been missed, but it sounds like you're on it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Handley?
I also just wanted to repeat what was said in the work session, in case you had any further information on that or the developer. But we were talking about the, the trees, the cottonwood trees that line the Provo River. And I, you know, understand that there might be some limitations to the ability to preserve those trees. But I'm hoping that we can because of the, the way in which they would function as a really nice buffer. Especially if people are visiting the the delta area or whatever, and they're looking south, they're gonna, they're gonna see a line of trees before they're gonna see large buildings. So I don't know if you have anything further to say about that, but.
No update other than I can just repeat that that is encouraged in the city code in Title 14. We encourage the, the maintenance of existing plant life and trees especially. But it also notes But it also notes when, you know, when you can. So that's, I think that's a discussion that the council, if they choose, can have with the applicant who's here. Eric Jurgensen is here to represent the applicant. I mean, you can maybe more appropriate to ask him that.
Okay, is is now a time appropriate for that or?
Any more questions for Aaron? Then let's do, Aaron. Thank you. Let's bring the developer forward to respond to that question.
Everyone loves trees, including myself and.
And for our record, could you just remind us of your name?
My name is Eric Jurgensen.
Thank you, Eric.
You know, cottonwood trees do put off cottonwood there, you know, so they're they're they can be a nuisance from time, but time, time to time, but the appeal of the property is obviously the the Delta or, excuse me, the buffer to the Delta as well as the trees. We'll do everything in our power to to maintain trees and but some, you know, especially on the south side as we begin to, you know, or or if they're in the middle of the trail, there's not really you know, an option without, you know, to not remove them. But the reality is, I I love trees. I love what they do for subdivisions, including this, this subdivision, this industrial park. And we'll work with the city and staff and 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 be very workable when it comes to trees.
Yeah, I think, thank you. I appreciate that very much. I mean, I I think you know, they're they're very beloved by the community. They're important to that walkway through the along the river from the lake all the way, all the way into downtown Provo and and that would probably be the first thing people would notice and complain about if there was a significant disruption to that. So I hope we can keep it as undisrupted as possible. So thank you.
Any other questions for the developer? Councilmember Bogdan.
We talked about the building height. What is your building height?
The building height typically on an industrial warehouse, this, these, these sizes is actually referred to as a clear height, which is in the interior. And those those clear heights are typically 32 feet to 36 feet. Then on top of that, there's what is called a parapet. And those parapets are usually between four to six feet. And so it would not, these buildings wouldn't come even close to, if you say 55 feet. So they won't, they won't even come close to that.
Personally, I would not feel comfortable voting yes for this unless there was some kind of guarantee that it wouldn't go past like 40 feet. What was it? 40 feet was your total or 42 feet?
Forty, I said 42, but there is elevations, different elevations of the property. And so it would be off of, I don't know the marker necessarily without having all of the plans engineered or civilly engineered. But the buildings themselves, if you were to measure from where they you know, essentially where the final grade would be to the very top of the parapet, they they're not going to exceed 42 feet. And so, but the east side, excuse me, the west side of the property drops significantly from the east side. And so it may, those buildings may appear to be a little bit taller eventually because there'll be more fill that will need to come in, but it's not going to come close to the to the 50, the 55 feet.
For me, I would, I would need some kind of guarantee that we're not gonna go past like 43 feet from your final grade. And I would need some kind of guarantee that your trail system is going to be there with some kind of tree coverage because George is right, the trees are very important to those people. And if for some reason they have to come down, I would think something would need to be replaced in its spot.
Well, to answer that question on the trail, obviously, the the trail is, I mean, the the project is you know, the location is beautiful right along that, the Delta, the river and so forth. So from that perspective, the trail definitely is going to be a nice amenity to the to the project. I I don't want to try to counter what you're saying, but if there's a clump of junk trees that need to come down, replacing a clump of junk trees back with a clump of trees doesn't necessarily, you know, it's not necessarily aesthetically pleasing. So for every tree that comes down, I wouldn't say that necessarily there's going to be a tree replaced, but the reality is that's conceptual. And so we will definitely work with staff and and obviously Provo City to make that trail look, you know, incredibly good. And then to answer on the guarantee, that that's a really strong word. You know, and and for me to sit here and say to you without having all of the information in front of me that I I guarantee you that it's not going to be. I think that's why there's city code, right? I mean, there's the code that says we don't want to go over 55 feet. And sorry, I can't read your last name.
Bogdan.
Bogdan, Ms. Bogdan. But I I'm telling you in all sincerity right right now that we're not going three stories. This, that would be a two story application for these industrial warehouses. So there wouldn't be double mezzanines inside. There'd be single mezzanines. And most buildings this size only go 32 clear, you know, plus the plus the six feet. So that's about 38 feet. But I know that there's a tenant that we have that wants a clear height of 36 plus six, so that's 42. So I I'm I'm trying to say it to you the best I possibly can, but that's where it's going to be is 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 that. But without having the civils in front of me and 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 so forth, I don't, I don't know if I can sit here and and say to you that you may may not have some some complaints down the line when, you know, it goes to staff. So I hope that answered your question.
Thank you.
Councilmember Christensen.
And so what, why aren't these going to be three story buildings?
Because most of these buildings are in, they're they're light industrial warehouses. And typically, they're not a building that is just all manufacturing. They usually are, you know, half storage, half or or can be up to half manufacturing and half warehousing. And so to take a concrete building and go higher than those, those, you know, footages that I just gave you changes the wall thickness and the engineering and the soil capacities and so forth. And so makes the buildings even more expensive. And for a warehousing company, they don't necessarily want to go up a ramp to a mezzanine to then store more. And so the the racking is designed in a certain way where it goes, when it goes up a certain height, you can use certain forklifts that are a certain cost. And as you incrementally go up four more feet, you have to buy even more expensive racking and more expensive equipment to do that storage. And so, you know, as you drive around and see all of the, you know, the the in the tilt industrial buildings, their clear heights are are mostly 32 feet plus the six. And then as they get bigger and bigger, they'll go up to 36 feet clear height. Some of them will go to 40. But not in this application, they wouldn't go, they wouldn't go to 40. But
Yes, that's helpful. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the developer? Thank you, Eric. This item is also available for public comment. If anyone would like to speak to this, they can step forward. If not, we'll bring the item back to the council for discussion. Okay. Thank you, Bill.
My name's Thomas Halliday. I reside at 3460 West Center Street. I am one of the owners of the property with my brother and our wives. I sat on the West Side Steering Committee that helped to lay out the properties on the west side and the south side of Provo a few years ago that kind of steered what we thought should happen with the properties. That's part of the reason that we see this going away from residential and into airport related properties. I went through that process, the the planning meetings, planning commission meetings, and the council meetings and saw those ideas adjusted and passed through your, the council and the Plannings Committee, excuse me. And I believe that this is the best use for the property that we have all decided that this is the right use. Putting residential homes there would be a hindrance for the related airport that's there and also for the residents that I don't think they would enjoy all the planes flying over them. And we know that the airport's gonna get bigger and there's gonna be more planes and and more of the airport related buildings around the property. Also, you see these hands. You see the trouble with them and stuff. I'm 62 years old and getting older. My brother's almost that old. I've got degenerative disc disease in my back. I have vertebra.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Halliday. There may be an online comment. Michael, do you see anyone? Okay, if there's no other public comment, we'll bring this back to the council for discussion. Councilmember McKay.
Aaron, just to be clear, there is a development agreement on the path in the fence and the amenities along the path, right?
Aaron, while you're, sorry, while you're standing right there, one of the other questions I had about the development agreement, based on this other conversation is it's standard term of our development agreement is that they have to build what's shown in the attached concept plan. Does the concept plan include floors and height and elevations? Or is that not in it?
It's not currently in it.
Oh, okay. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Thanks. And is there a reason is not in it or that we don't see it?
Typically, elevations aren't included unless they were specifically brought up as a concern of the body.
How about the amenities along the trail and things like that?
Those are, those are part of the site plan and detailed in section four.
Hey, and was that in the pre-work? And I I may have just missed it.
I it, I don't think we hit on it in the work meeting, but it is in the the development agreement. It's been signed.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Aaron. We're going to reopen public comment for an online comment. Oh, okay. Yes, go ahead. Come to the microphone, please. No, go ahead, Kim.
I don't know, I'm just observing to be at the wonderful reception after, but.
And if you could just state your name and city of residence.
Kimberly Money. I live in Provo. And I think it's it's a reasonable request to ask for those heights to be guaranteed. I think it's a concern. And I feel like if we're gonna, if if I were voting, I would say that would be contingent on that because of the concerns that I've heard. That's all I'm saying. And if we don't agree to that, then maybe we wait.
Thank you, Kim. Any luck, Michael? Okay, we'll close public comment and and come to the council for discussion. Any additional discussion? Councilmember Rachel.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that the reason that we have the trail and the little exercise things in the concept site plan are because we discussed that earlier. Is that why there was that level of detail for that amenity?
Correct. Yeah, that's that's been a focus even when we were talking about changing the general plan is is preserving that amenity of the river.
Okay, so we had already indicated that was important. That's why, because normally that sort of detail wouldn't be presented this early.
Right, but because of those discussions, we we were sure to to follow up with zone changes and concept plans to make sure that was part of it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comment, any other discussion? Councilmember Hoben.
Yeah, I was just gonna reassure Tom, the ship has sailed on the residential and because we voted on this a long time ago that it would be warehouse. But the reason I wanted residential is it just the the need we have for residential and you and in Provo. But ultimately, I think I think I would agree that if if there's a concern on the council, I'd I'd probably stand with other council members and say that we'd like, you know, it would be, it would help us feel more comfortable if there was some sort of guarantee on the height of the building. But I guess I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you, Travis. Any other comment, any other discussion? Councilmember Whipple.
Yeah, I'm not concerned about the height of the building because there is the limit in the zone. And the way he described the additional cost and the way the building would function, I'm just not, not really concerned about it. I feel assured that he's done the market study. He knows what's necessary for the use of this facility. And I trustingly believe him when he anticipates that it would be impractical and more expensive, like needlessly expensive to make it taller than the anticipated maximum of 42 feet. So I don't have any concerns on that matter.
Thank you. Anyone else? Great, let's go ahead and call for a vote then. Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Garrett, yes. Councilmember Handley?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoben?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Whipple?
Yes.
And Councilmember Bogdan?
No.
Thank you. This item, this issue passes by a vote of six to one. The final item on our agenda this evening is an implied motion on an ordinance regarding a zone map amendment from the A1.5 zone to the MDR zone in order to build 16 townhome units located approximately at 5568 North Canyon Road in the Timview neighborhood. This item will also be presented by Aaron Ardmore.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Get the slides up. So this property came to you last spring and summer for a high density residential zone and it was it was denied. I think at that time it was 66 units. Since then, we were lucky enough to have the Northeast Neighborhoods Plan adopted, which is pictured there on the right, identify this property future use as medium density residential. So the applicant heard that, he saw it. He's all the different conversations he had with Public Works and Engineering in the neighborhood. He's he's come up with this medium density residential project of 16 for sale townhomes. I think the for sale is an important part of that. That was discussed at work meeting today, so I won't reiterate any of that. But there is a a development agreement tied to this reason as well to ensure that this is what's built, to ensure that they are for sale units and to ensure some other amenities like the connection to the the bottom of Shoreline Trail is is built out when the project plan comes along. The Planning Commission recommended approval on this item and and staff's in full support of it, but I'll have, try to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Aaron. Are there any questions for Aaron? Councilmember Christensen.
So Aaron, if you would just reiterate that this development agreement can't be sold to someone else, can't be flipped, can't be anything else. Either this is developed by this developer or it's not developed.
No, it's actually tied to the land and not the not the person.
Right, but but what I'm saying is this, this is what's tied to the land, is this development.
This development would be locked in through a divi- This development would be locked in through a development agreement, even if this applicant was to sell the, the property. The next person along would have to build this.
Would have to build this. Now, if another developer came along and said, well, no, I actually want to go back to sixty, that has to go through a whole new process.
They'd have to come back to you for that.
Just want to make that clear.
Yep, thank you.
Councilmember McKay.
And can you show us the wording on the development agreement?
Yes, could you put that up, please? Uh, so this is a draft. So things can change with it, but let's go to section four if we could. So, oh, back up. Okay, so these are the, these are the current proffers. The applicant could speak to these if there's changes since this was drafted. Oh, go ahead.
We still have the problem that you haven't fixed the fifty percent because he proffered a hundred.
Right, so we haven't updated that because it hasn't been, you know, it hasn't been back and forth with the council yet and the applicant. But, but we're happy to change that if that's required.
Councilmember Bogdan?
I just had the same question as Chris.
Councilmember Hoban?
Can you remind me what the original concerns were with this project when we talked about it the first few times? I know there were more units, but was it capacity, sewage capacity?
That was the biggest deal, the sewer capacity. I think that was number one. Number two was traffic and just overall density impact on the surrounding area.
And all three of those are alleviated, you think, with the reduction in number of units?
Correct, yeah, they, they're continuing to work with engineering on the best way to access the property and there's, there's solutions for that.
And no sewage capacity issues anymore?
No sewage capacity issues.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Erin? Great, thank you, Erin. I see that the developer is here. Would, David, would you have any comments to add or any points of clarification? And can you remind me of the pronunciation of your last name?
I start every, every conversation with the reminding of the pronunciation of my last name. Bregangi.
Bregangi, thank you.
Yeah, David Bregangi from Cedar Hills. Thanks, it's good to be back here. Thanks, I know we've, we've had more discussion on this and lots of discussion, you know, in the, in the past. I feel like this is the best solution we could come up with. I know there's lots of concerns about number of units there, there, there always is. I tried to put more units. I really wanted twenty. This was the best layout, though, that we could come up with. So sixteen, if you're gonna stick with a, a two car garage townhome, this is how many will fit. So that's why we ended up here. I did offer the, a majority of the units would be owner occupied. That's something that I, I'd mentioned. I know now there's some conversation around a hundred percent. I don't know that I, that I'd offered that before. The market has shifted in a way that it makes more sense to buy these and have them be owner occupied versus rentals. It's not a good, it's not as good of an investment to buy new construction, get loans at today's interest rates and then rent them out. The math just doesn't work like it did a few years ago. So that's something that's happening right now. The other thing, the trail connection that's on there, I felt like that was essential when we had a large condo project there with the sixteen units. I'm not sure that it is. I think I would, I'd prefer that that be removed. There will be access to the, to the trail, you know, by residents being, being able to walk up the, the private drive and going up. Whether we put that in or not, though, I'm not sure that we're gonna have public space behind the townhome units like we were before. Those might end up being private yards that are back there. So I think I would remove that just because I'm not sure that that will happen. There, there's a chance that it could. I'm, I'm not sure that it, that it would just because of access that's available the other way. Also, the other thing that's changed as well with the new intersection going in there, they're adding a sidewalk across University Avenue. And so that was, that was an issue. That was an issue that I never had a solution for, but that will be in the spring. There'll be the new intersection and there'll be a, a crosswalk there. So people from, from, that live here will be able to go across and access the Provo River Trail and have access, you know, to go along the new industrial building that's being put in there. They can get all the way there. And it's amenities.
Any questions for Mr. Bregangi? Councilmember Christensen?
Mr. Bregangi, would you be willing to consider a hundred percent homeownership? Obviously, this council feels very strongly about homeownership.
So again, with, with the fifty-one, that's a, a minimum requirement. I mean, they could very well all be owner occupied. I, I don't think that they make sense as, as, you know, it's not going to make sense as a large rental place with dividing up different rooms. There's just not the parking that's there. This has a minimum of three parking spots per unit. I, I think we're gonna be able to make that before by just making some adjustments on the, on the east side. I, I guess my only pushback on that would be it's not a requirement of other projects that I've seen here that have come through recently. You know, I feel like I'm proffering to make it owner occupied and this area is already dominated by rental units and, you know, I'm, I'm just sixteen.
Yeah. We actually feel very strongly about homeownership. And so I would feel much better about this if it, if all sixteen. And I know that it may not pencil out, look right. We see all kinds of strange and abnormal things happen to housing. And so I'd love this to stay a nice unit, you know, homeownership. This is a key part of the community. And so I, I would feel strongly about a hundred percent homeownership. And I think you will be seeing a lot of that going forward.
Any other questions for the developer? Yes, Councilmember McKay.
Hey, David. So no trail. Why is the trail still on here then, Erin? Do we know?
I, I think it was on there before and I just don't think.
So we just haven't updated it for this new, yeah, because this is a whole new project.
Again, there is, there will be access
Right.
On the road, right?
I'm actually not that worried about that. There is a trail up there. They can get to it. I care more about the homeownership. So are you willing to do the at least fifty percent in that they will be guaranteed for that first year owner occupied?
Yes, for sure, fifty percent. And again, it may well be, be more than that.
Yeah, I understand.
But I, I don't know about that. We had some discussion about that, how we enforce the, for the first year.
It's in a CCNRs.
Oh, that it be occupied by the owner for the first year.
And it's a deed restriction too.
Well, yeah, I was gonna raise my hand and say that we probably ought to clarify that because, you know, here's a prime example of where this doesn't have the language in it that was just discussed in the work session, so it's, and was already under negotiation before that discussion was had. So it's probably important to clarify if that is the expectation here. So David, so you know, there's some other projects that are a consideration where the council has the, the development agreement contains language that requires two things. It requires the developer to actually record a deed restriction requiring homeowner occupancy during the first year each time that the property is sold and makes it, and that there must be CCNRs and that the CCNRs have to have that same provision in them. So again, the counselors would have to speak for if that's what their intent is here, but that's language that's starting to show up in other development agreements with this same concern. Councilmember Hanley?
Yeah, I was just gonna say with regard to the trail, I don't, I would agree that I don't think it's super crucial given the size and the, the immediate proximity of, of the already established trailhead.
But line F will be in there, right? The, just making sure that there's, you know, the property that I own up there, that there will be a permanent easement through there. That will leave it.
Any additional questions for the developer? Councilmember.
I'm good with the at least fifty percent if it has the in perpetuity aspect to it.
And Councilmember Whipple?
Yeah, and by in perpetuity, it just means each time it's transferred, there has to be that one year that will prevent it after a year or so just from being snatched up by an investor. I, I think what you're saying about the trail makes sense, that there would just be access through your residence, but there's no need to build a trailhead. So I don't know if trail connection means trailhead here, but I, I feel good about what you're doing with that. It looks like the, the massing, the parking, all of these things will be fine. Honestly, I'm still sad that we can't get like the sixty or sixty-six units because we need that much housing in our city. And I'm, I'm trying to convince myself that it's, it's better to go ahead and get sixteen now than it is to wait however many years it is until we're able to get the sewer updated to get the additional fifty units. So I want to thank you for sticking with the project and being patient even when you keep getting yeah, what must be very frustrating pushback and sometimes contradictory, contradictory signals. I do believe that this will be an improvement over the mess of a pit that we have there right now. And this actually will be a really nice place that people would want to live. So thank you.
Councilmember Hoban?
So Brian, are you saying we would need the legalese in, in four B in order to ensure that that it would occur the way?
Yeah, if that's the intent. So I guess what I would ask with a question really for, for David based on council comments so far, I, I think we would need to clarify since this agreement. Let me back up. The ordinance says development agreement in the form shown in the exhibit with the representations made in the meeting. I think what we need to do at this point is clarify what the representations made in the meeting were. So, so I guess my question for you, David, is you've made a couple of comments about the trail. I'm not sure I'm exactly clear. Would you, your proffer would delete E and F, just E?
Just E.
Okay, so your, so your proffer is what's shown on the screen minus paragraph E. Paragraph B is fifty percent. Are you, would your proffer include the deed restrictions and CCNR language that we just talked about?
I, I think I'm okay with that, especially if that's the way the city is, is moving in general with other things. That seems, that seems fair. I wouldn't be against that.
Okay. So ba- based on that, Counselor Hoban, I think what I'm saying is that you're, based on that being a representation made in the meeting, you're okay to go ahead and vote, but that language that we just talked about will get added into the final version before it gets circulated for signature.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure we're on the same page. And I also wanted to say I appreciate that you've gone the distance on this, tried to find a made, way to make this work and, and stuck it out. And I'm glad to see you hear back so soon. I thought it was gonna be years. So appreciate, appreciate your diligence and grit and tenacity to get it done.
If I could just comment on that too, I, I'm actually agreeing with the council at this point. Obviously, it was devastating when the project was turned down after I'd done it, gone so far. I'm not sure that approving it with the contingency would have been helpful to me anyway. So I kind of feel like in the end, like, you know, maybe that was, maybe what should have happened is the thing that happened. And, you know, if it was sixty-six units with an open-ended fix the sewer first, I'm not sure that that would be better for me than just having something that works right now.
Councilmember.
Don't, don't say that. See, now you've just empowered us in the future, you know?
I don't do it ever again.
The next guy's really screwed.
Councilmember Hanley?
Yeah, I, I had one question, but I also wanted to make a comment also. This gravel pit appeared in the first year of my being on the council and it was really devastating to us as a city that it got left in that condition and we ended up creating a bunch of legislation to try to prevent something like that from happening in the future. But meanwhile, it just sat there looking every time I drove by. It was just a reminder of how frustrating that was. So I, I really am glad to see that, I hope that we can make good use of it in the way that you've proposed here. I'm just asking for a little clarification on F. I don't even know what that means, so maybe you can help me understand what that means.
If, if you go back to a previous picture and look at the whole size of the property that I own, I'm only proposing to develop on a small, flat part of the property, but it does extend higher up and Indian Trail goes through property that I own. And there's currently
Oh, I see it.
No easement for the, for a permanent access to that trail. So as part of this, that would be.
Great, okay, so there will be no complications at all for the Indian Trailhead users to go up that road and, okay. Yeah, then I, I fully support that, especially if we're not, if you're not proposing any other sort of access. I mean, that's an extraordinarily steep hill to get up and over that limb. So it does make a little sen- more sense, I think, to give the access to the road and make sure everyone has, has access up there. Thanks.
Councilmember Christensen?
I don't know if it's that steep. It looks pretty flat here. I, I just want to say thank you. You have gone the distance on this and been very flexible with your willingness to make sure that we actually record into the deed. Because our, our biggest concern is that we don't want all of these wonderful homes just bought up by institutional investors. You know, this is part of the American dream. And so your willingness to actually record those as part of the deed. Realize this is a moving target. You will see developers coming and you, they will hear from this council. This needs to all be homeownership. And you've been in this a long time and I appreciate what you've offered.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bregangi. This item was also noticed for public comment, so would like to open it at this time for any who would like to share input.
Sharon Memmott, Neighborhood District One Board Chair. Change the time up there, please. Just in case. Because I haven't written anything formal, I just wanted to get up and say thank you to Mr. Bregangi for how long this has taken. I know it's been long and it feels drug out. But I appreciate that we now have a Northeast Area Plan in place as we move forward with this. And while the plan actually calls out MDR because of sewer capacity currently and neighborhood concerns, I appreciate that his project will actually fit more in an LDR zone, which is what the neighbors were more comfortable with. And, and he can move forward, as he mentioned, now and not have to wait. I do need to clarify from the staff report, it's, keeps being presented that we're in favor of the zone change, which isn't quite the way that poll was worded in our neighborhood meeting. The neighbor said they were in favor of the project. Everybody loves this project that is presented to us October tenth. The size, the scope, all of it. With, with the caveat, as, as we polled, we appreciate it's not a vote, it was a poll, the smallest zone change that would allow the project. It would fit in an LDR except for the height of the building. He didn't feel like he could get it under thirty feet. So, so we're hoping for about thirty-five feet. I appreciate that his development agreement says three stories specifically because MDR calls out forty-five feet, which I'm sure the neighbors would be concerned about. So they're, so they're very, we're all very excited about this. As we listen to your discussion, we're concerned about I'm concerned about a moving target development agreement, but I appreciate that he's proffered one we can actually see. I'm less concerned about the E being removed as access because F is being maintained. Let's see. Yeah, thank you for having the development agreement so that we can see it. And we're grateful that this project fits in the current sewer capacity. We're excited to see it go forward. It would be wonderful if he can move it forward and get it actually built.
Thank you, Sharon. Any other public comment?
Bonnie Morrow, North Timview District One. We want to let you know we are very excited about this. Thank you. Thank you for all the hard work you've put in. Thank you to the developer for listening, making the changes. Thank you for implementing a year's worth of work of the neighborhood plan. Thank you for listening to UDOT. There was a lot of work. Parts and Rec is gonna be excited that the trail is being taken care of also. It looks like a home run to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Any additional comment?
Hi, Ginny Smith, fifty-four forty North Canyon Road, just about the closest neighbor to this property. Um, it's been a long haul with the gravel pit and neighborhood plan and all that, and we're just pleased to find something that we think is a good balance. Something that'll look beautiful and useful and will have new neighbors and hopefully they all own their place because homeownership is really important. And so we're grateful for that, we're grateful that it jives well with our neighborhood plan and can't wait to have sixteen new neighbors, thank you.
Thank you, Ginny.
Matt Wheelwright, also on the district board, uh, in River Bottoms and District One. A couple of thoughts, um, first, I'd like to hear someone talk about uh, how you enforce what you're talking about on the, in perpetuity. I just don't see how that's feasible, but that's a separate topic from what we're talking about, I am in support. Um, I'm in support of sixty-six also, but I, but because we're here and I think it's great, I think we ought to proceed and I would encourage you to vote yes. Um, and I also hope a couple of things, one is uh, the Arbers and Canyon Brook, which are on the same side of the street, are also owned not for rent and there's some issues that happen that we just need to be honest about. An HOA is not as productive in maintaining the property as a well-maintained apartment kind of setup. And so just, we need to understand that and understand that when we ask for these things, we also have to know that it's not, the dynamics now shift. Um, but I appreciate everything he's proffered, I think you've asked a lot. If I were the developer, I might stop giving, but you know, you, I think we're in a great spot, David's gonna work really hard, he's really excited to see this happen, I would encourage you to vote yes. But I would like to understand how we enforce that. Um, if you want to get a case study, just go talk to the people at Canyon Brook and Arbers and then compare that to what's happening at the Lofts and the Flats, it is quite different. I do like ownership, but don't think this means affordability because that, I don't think is what's gonna happen in this neighborhood, but I'm in total support and I think we ought to keep going, so thank you.
Thank you, Matt. If there's no additional, we have an online comment, Michael?
Yeah.
Go ahead, please. Could you go ahead and, and speak? Un, unmute your microphone and, and go ahead with your public comment. What's his name, Michael?
Mark.
Mark, can you hear me? Okay, sorry about that. Any other public comment? Okay, we'll close public comment then and bring this back to the council for discussion. Okay, if there's no additional discussion, uh, Councilmember Whipple.
On the question you asked, Matt, so the idea of recording a deed restriction would put anybody who is looking to purchase the property on notice because that's public records, you would have to pull that when you're applying for your loan and everything for the property. And that deed restriction would say that it needs to be owner occupied for at least a year before it could be rented out. And so every time that property is sold or conveyed to a new owner, that deed restriction pops up again because it's in that chain of title. So it's, it's kind of a noticing thing, there may be something that we could do on the city end where we would perhaps keep this as a list of properties for which we would not issue a rental dwelling license. Um, or that business license associated with it for the first year, and you know, I think that we should certainly look on something like that for that end as well, but the important thing is that this notice is recorded and anybody who is buying the property has that notice, so you don't have somebody buying it and then finding out that they can't use it as they intended afterwards, so anyone doing due diligence will, will be smacked in the face with this, this deed restriction. So that um, is really the strongest tool, I think, that we have for doing it right now. And it's not reliant on the CCNRs of an HOA or anything like that because those are subject to change by the vote of those members.
Thank you, Rachel. We're going to reopen public comment to pick up that online caller, Mr. Mark Robb, can you go ahead, please? Unmute your microphone and go ahead, you have two minutes.
Yeah, he's coming up.
Okay. All right. And we'll, we'll close public comment. Councilmember McKay.
One thing too, while we're working towards this, it's not all about affordable for us, like the price is what the market's gonna make the price. But like you're saying, those other town homes are having trouble with maintenance and stuff, I bet you they aren't owner occupied, right? They become rentals, even if they are owned, they become rentals and they don't care as much, but you get a development. There is one development we passed over Buckley Draw and it's a hundred plus houses and they all have to be owner occupied. And that HOA is gonna be strict, they're gonna be watching it, they're gonna care, it is easier to watch it. I, I was president of an HOA where we went from like, golly, I went from like thirty percent ownership, it was after two thousand eight, but we got up to like ninety-nine percent ownership, I think one house wasn't um, owner occupied. There was a huge difference in how we took care of the HOA and how things looked, so. If we get that buyer, we want to get the owners living there, number one, so they can build equity, have equity, there's just becoming less and less houses to buy. And we're a city of sixty percent renters and forty percent ownership, so we're trying to put in all these things to make it the best development we can, that people want to live in it, that it can be more successful, and we just started doing it for about a year now where we've been pushing for this and making it a um, part of development agreements. So time will tell, but we have good hope that it'll hopefully be successful and make good communities that people want to stay in and live in and take care of.
Unless there's any additional council discussion, we'll call for a vote. Councilmember Handley.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoben?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Whipple?
Yes.
Councilmember Bogdan?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Happy New Year, yes.
And Councilmember Garrett, yes. So that motion passes seven to zero. If there's no objection, we will now adjourn the Provo Municipal Council meeting by unanimous consent.